Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our first meeting in 2017. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all sign in, please? Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present, with Counselor Hensley previously requesting to be excused, an accorum has been declared.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
There's not?
With that, Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Counselor Hensley from the meeting.
I second.
I've got a motion on the agenda approval. Is there any further discussion? See none, start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have one card for Mr. Dan McCann. Mr. McCann? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you for having me. Dan McCann, 1809 sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. You may wonder why I'm wearing the Raider apparel. Well, guess what? I saw Ken Staber playing the Orange Bowl when I was living with my uncle in Miami. I didn't even know who he was. Nebraska heavily favored, but I can pick up on things. My dad said you could find a needle in a haystack. I'm watching this guy on the sidelines, left-handed, threaded like a needle. He picked Nebraska apart. How did I know? Waiter, what happened? The Raiders came to Santa Rosa, California, where I grew up. They had two training camps there. I remember John Madden sitting there drinking a strawberry milkshake with a couple of his Enough about that. I want to talk about something serious. We just lost a real neat lady, Pat Wacero. I've known her for a long time, and there's one word to describe her. She was class. She was just a classy gal, always looked good, very intelligent, and people, these goddamn two-lane roads and three-lane roads, will you slow it down or just pull over and sober up, whatever your damn problem is? Clean up your act. Now, the only thing that's going to get me to leave this place is the two-lane roads. That Corvette on Highway 17 could have been me. I'm tailgated all the time around here, especially when I come back from Monty. When I come back from Monty at night, I slow it down a little bit because everywhere you can have little animal life, and they tailgate me all the way in, and then they just stop at Walmart. If you're going to be up my butt, pass or get off, whatever, okay? Anyway, we'll see what happens. There's a big world out there, and as you know, my answer is professional price fighting. Car rider isn't the place. This is MMA and wrestling. They love boxing in New Mexico. We'll see what happens. I'm not moving tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else? I don't have any other cards. We will then move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar shows multiple action items with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have three items: the approval of the minutes for the December 21st, 2016 meeting, award of bid for a 2016 residential trash truck, and the award of bid for a 2016 street department tool truck.
Mayor, if I may, I had a couple of questions on C-1A and C-1B. If we could probably pull those and put them right there, right in front of C-1, under regular business?
You want them before the public works?
Yeah, right in that area because it has to do with public works anyway.
Okay, we'll do it immediately after business brought forward by city staff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before public works, okay. We can do that. Any other concerns? We'll entertain a motion on Consent Calendar A then.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A with removing C-1A and C-1B to be moved before public works.
Second.
I've got a motion and second on Consent Calendar A. Is there any further discussion? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll then move on to regular business, and we will talk about award of bid for the 2016 residential trash truck. Mr. Gregel?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Oh. Thank you, Pat. I was looking at this, and in reading this, the communication talks about Peterbilt and Mack being the same trucks, yet one is $6,455 less, and I guess you're asking us to approve the Mack, which is almost a little over $13,000? What's the difference there? And I guess...
The Mack and the Peterbilt are the cabin chassis for the truck. They are essentially the same truck. We've got no preference either will do us a good job. The difference, the additional $6,000 that I'm asking you to approve is for the trash body itself that's mounted on the cabin chassis. The Sidewinder body is a body that we've had an opportunity to demo. We are familiar with New Way, who's the manufacturer. We're familiar with Elliott Equipment. We've purchased trucks from them in the past. We know their service technicians. They stop by regularly, even if we don't have work for them. We're comfortable with the service they've given us. We've never had an opportunity to, we've never seen a GS 9000 body in the wild. We're not aware of any cities in the region that are running them. They come out of Pennsylvania. I'm concerned about maintenance. I'm concerned about parts. The Sidewinder bodies have moved, all of the hydraulic switches on them have gone to proximity switches, which are optical switches, instead of the arms with the different throws on them. So, we can have one switch on the shelf, and it'll replace any of the 15 switches on the truck. We're just more familiar with it, more comfortable with it, and for an extra 3%, I think it's a viable choice.
Okay. You talked about making the difference on some, what is it, some savings in, some savings somewhere, I can't... Operations. Thank you. Where's that at?
We've seen savings in our fuel because of some of the changes to the routes. We've seen some savings in our building maintenance line item. We've got savings in other operational areas of the budget that can make up for that.
Well, I was kind of confused because in your communication, you talk about both vehicles being almost the same, and then...
Yeah, the cabin chassis. The Peterbilt and the Mack are...
Maybe that's where I was kind of...
They're apples and apples. We've got no preference between those two. It's the trash body itself that we prefer, the New Way body, the Sidewinder body.
Okay. And secondly, on C-1B, the tool truck, what is that?
It's a Tommy lift truck. You'll see them driving around. You know, it's got the bed that lays out flat and then lifts up and down. The one that we're replacing, it was on the capital improvement plan for this year. We were going to replace it last spring. You guys had approved the award of bid to Town and Country this last spring. They had given us the wrong information. If you remember, Ford took down all of their factories to retool for the aluminum frame. We put in our order for that truck about a week after they took their factories down. So, it had been so long since that bid had been awarded, I wanted to go ahead and rebid the truck, just to make sure that Town and Country was still low, and they indeed came in below the state bid.
So, when you talk about tools, you talk about, is it mechanical tools or...
It's just, they just call it the tool truck. They carry paint, they carry signs, they carry cones, they carry shovels, they carry whatever they're working with. It's the stake bed truck with the Tommy lift.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate you doing business with Town and Country, keeping that money here.
I appreciate them when they give us the opportunity.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gregel just mentioned it. I just want to note that this purchase is going to be local, and it's under budget as well, by $9,000, $8,000. Thank you.
And with that, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve C-1A and C-1B.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on award of bid for the residential trash truck, as well as the bid for the street department trash tool truck. Is there any further discussion? See none, start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
So, to clarify, Counsel, was Counselor Stefano the second on that? Who was the second?
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
I thought I heard a second. Sorry. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll revote. Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. Move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff, public works. We have three items tonight. The first one is the award of bid for the 2016 golf course front nine pump station upgrade. We also have consideration of a deviation from existing off-street parking requirements for two proposed facilities within the city of Alamosa, as well as a first reading on ordinance number 1-2017 and ordinance rezoning Montana Azul Estates, filing number five in its entirety, lying generally north of Tremont Avenue and west of Craft Drive in the city of Alamosa, Colorado, from commercial business to residential medium. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. The first item this evening is the award of bid for the 2016 golf course front nine pump station upgrade. The irrigation pump that supplies water to the front nine holes of the golf course has surpassed its service life and has, over the years, become a maintenance concern for those that operate it. In the event of a pump failure, it would be difficult at best to supply water in a timely manner to the golf course, to the front nine holes, which could potentially cause turf maintenance issues if it were to happen during the heat of the summer. Because of issues specific to our substitute supply plan for the back nine water supply, that water would not be able to be used, and the front nine has never been supplied with potable water, so the installation of the facilities necessary to complete that project would take some time. At your October 19th meeting, you awarded the bid for the pump and the associated controls to Grand Junction Pipe in the amount of $92,225, and that pump is scheduled for delivery tomorrow afternoon. The award for this, this award is for the construction and installation of the intake structure, the wet well, the slab, the pump house, and the power to the pump house, to run the pump. We released a request for quotes, received two bids, each from local vendors. Those bids were RMS Utilities for $107,650 and Gardner Excavating for $125,450. We are asking that you award the bid to RMS Utilities in the amount of $107,650.
Thank you, Pat. Are we constructing, we're constructing a whole new pump house? Where will that be located? Is that...
Just west, just down, down country from the pump house that's there right now. If you, there's that first T, and the pump house sits right at the first T. If you just go down to the, what would be the southwest corner of the pond, it's going to sit right there.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
And it'll, it's going to be identical to the one we put in for the back nine.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions of Pat, Counsel? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you. Pat, I can't remember, and so I apologize that I didn't look it up, but was the other bid that we awarded, was it a little higher than we had anticipated to, or just the whole project is just coming in higher than we anticipated?
A little of both.
A little of both, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Any further discussion? Counselor Gregel?
If not, I'll make the motion. We go ahead and approve the bid to RMS Utilities in an amount of $107,650.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on awarding the bid for the golf course front pump station upgrade. Is there any further discussion? Start voting, please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consideration of a deviation from existing off-street parking requirements for two proposed facilities within the city of Alamosa.
Thank you, sir. Occasionally, through daily use of the zoning code and city ordinances, inconsistencies, contradictions, or other issues present themselves when we try to apply the code. Just as it was determined to be necessary to reevaluate the off-street parking requirements for restaurants recently, we've uncovered two more code requirements that we feel would be appropriate for Counsel to reconsider. In reviewing off-street parking requirements for the new Justice Center, section 21-171 of our code would require, based on facility-specific square footages provided by the county, 760 paved off-street parking spaces, unreasonable from both a taxpayer cost perspective, as well as the difficulties it would present from the management of stormwater. The county, based on historical requirements of seven similar facilities designed and built in the region, is making formal requests to Counsel for the approval of a total of 155 off-street parking spaces on site, with the agreement to use the 140-space administration building and the 94-space annex building parking lots for overflow when necessary. Based on information provided by the architect and an independent staff review of the third edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, staff feels comfortable that this recommendation of 155 spaces is adequate to effectively serve the facility's employees and visitors on all but the very odd days of multiple jury trials or similar non-standard uses. The other requirement that has made itself evident is the existing parking requirement for the proposed ice rink multipurpose facility. As staff makes their way through the design process determining all of the city and state code requirements associated with the facility, a review of our off-street parking requirements was completed, and it was determined that compliance with the literal interpretation of our code is both unrealistic and inappropriate. Existing code would require the construction of over 1,000 paved parking spaces, which, based on current estimates without benefit of engineering design, would cost in the neighborhood of $1.2 million, or roughly half the cost of the proposed facility, as well as imposing requirements to manage nearly a quarter of a million gallons of stormwater after a one-inch rain event. We reviewed the parking requirements provided by several cities with facilities much like we were proposing, and determined that the average number of parking spaces provided by the cities of Durango, Gunnison, Taos, Frazier, and Glenwood Springs is one space per 322 square feet of facility. Many of these parking improvements at those cities are intended to provide parking not only for the ice rinks or multi-use facilities, but they are intended to also provide parking for city recreational facilities like soccer and softball fields, parks, and swimming pools. With this in mind, and understanding that our fairgrounds and softball fields have existing dedicated parking, staff recommends that we expand the existing rec center parking lot by an additional 40 parking spaces to accommodate one space per 400 square feet of facility for both the recreation center and the proposed multi-use facility. If, over time, we discover that we are lucky enough to have the facility require more parking than we expect, we can always expand the parking further into the fairgrounds parking lot. Section 21-173 of the code provides Counsel the ability to increase or decrease the required number of parking spaces in consideration of three factors, one being unique parking requirements of any non-dwelling uses. In consideration of the foregoing, staff recommends that Counsel allow a deviation from existing code to allow a total of 155 parking spaces for the new Justice Center and a total of 160 spaces for the proposed ice rink multipurpose facility and rec center.
Thank you, Pat. Counselor Gregel?
I had a question. Do we have a guess limit of what that extra 40 parking lots is going to cost?
It's about $56,000.
$56,000?
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. Does this only provide a deviation for these sites, or has this changed everything?
This is...
These are site specifics. It's just these sites.
Thank you.
We will do a complete evaluation of our parking requirements as a part of the code update. We'll look at every single use group in the code and make sure that the parking is appropriate for those.
Pat, even though the multi-use facility is not a reality, obviously, you've taken into consideration where this parking lot is going to exist?
Yes, sir. We're going to expand the existing rec center parking lot to the south.
Okay.
Where we'll copy the same, the islands, the curb, everything will just look exactly the same. It's just going to be carried one block further south.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gregel?
One more comment. All this is coming out because of the master plan? The way, all these regulations and stuff, were they caught through the master plan?
No, this, none of this has anything to do with the master plan. These are existing ordinances that we've tried to apply to two proposed projects and felt a need to reevaluate them.
And when you look historically, when you, when Counsel voted to change it for restaurants and the potential event center type use, it's these things where we didn't realize there might be some potential issues in the existing parking. Now, the comp plan or the code review is the way to fix this, to have a thorough review of it, but we're catching it with some of these specific requests.
Yeah, that's what I thought, because the conclusion on it talks about the comprehensive plan, the zone code update, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I see where you're coming from now. I'm sorry.
Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Pat. I have a concern with the county's deviation. It appears we're still dealing with an issue with the airport parking lot to where they haven't given us anything in writing in regards to a timeline of when they're going to complete that project, and I believe that building was completed a little bit over a year ago. Now, we're looking at giving them a deviation on the Justice Center. My question and concern is, what are we putting in place to protect us if, for some reason, and I believe that the county is going to come through and complete their project, but let's say they run out of money again, and they decide that they cannot complete the deviation parking spaces that we allowed? What do we have in place to protect us, to make sure that we're not sending out mixed messages to other future developers who may come up and say, "Well, you know, we're going to build this big project," but they know that in the city of Alamosa, if we run out of money, all we have to do is say, "We don't have any money, so we're not going to complete our parking lot." What can we put in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
We will make it clear from the very beginning that a CO will not be issued until the parking is complete.
And to kind of break that down, the CO is a certificate of occupancy. Unfortunately, what created some of the confusion with the airport is when we communicated through email that we had concerns about the parking lot being done. We felt we were reassured by the county that it would be done and on good faith issued the CO. That won't happen again. We won't issue the CO unless the full project is completed or Counsel approves some special request.
Any request for a temporary CO or anything like that will come to Counsel.
Okay, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, once again, I'm for working with the county, and I'm for collaborating and having partnerships and making sure that we build good buildings and facilities and complexes throughout our city, but at the same time, I also hear from the developer side that comes in and they're saying, "Well, is that really fair? You're making these deviations, or you're making these exceptions when other developers are not privy to that type of leeway?" So, I just want to make sure that we're fair in all of our dealings, and that's why I brought that up.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Obviously, we have, we have policy specific to that, and I believe that in the future, that policy will not be deviated from unless Counsel authorizes it. These issues here are, on an individual basis, we can either accept or reject them, but they do not set a precedent of any kind. So, you know, it's really staff's responsibility to make sure that the letter of the law is followed, correct?
Correct, sir.
Absolutely. Counselor Gregel?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments, and I hate the term "set the precedence" because I have not seen nothing of that sort. These deviations right here are being recommended by the city because, like I said, I pointed out the comp plan rezone, and that's where this is coming from. It's not that the county is trying to get over or do anything like that. So, and I think we need to look at that and continue working together because that's it within the city itself.
Yeah, this is a very reasonable request the county's making.
Sure.
It's appropriate, and it makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
And I just want to be clear to make sure Counsel and Gregel knows that I don't think the county's trying to get over on us at all. I just want to make sure that, as a city, we protect our best interest, just in case something happens in the future, we're not having this discussion a year from now worried about an incomplete parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. All right. Any further questions of Pat? Counselor Hill?
I would just like to make a quick comment. I met with our city manager before this meeting, and I asked this question. I said, "Well, why are we going to..." In my eyes, it looks like the parking at the proposed ice rink multi-use facility along with the rec center seems adequate enough for people to use both facilities, but city manager brought up a good point, saying, "Well, it wouldn't be fair that we don't require the needed parking spots for other entities, other businesses, other governing organizations, but we let ourselves slide." So, I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. I think it's important also for us to realize that whatever gets built is for future use, and let's look about five, 10, maybe even 15 years down the road and see how these facilities may be used and the number of people that may use them. So, I think forward thinking also comes into play here as well. Counselor Stefano?
Pat, is it my understanding that the Justice Center is going to be built in the area of the rec center also?
No, it'll be over just north of the annex building, across the road from the administrative building for the county.
Because I was just looking at this proposed Justice Center to allow the expansion of... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no further discussion or questions, I move that we approve and allow the deviation from existing code as provided by section 21-173D of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances to allow a total of 155 paved off-street parking spaces be constructed at the proposed Justice Center, and to allow the expansion of the existing recreation center parking lot to provide a total of 160 parking spaces to accommodate the recreation center and the proposed ice rink multipurpose facility.
I second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the proposal? See none, start voting, please. I'm missing one. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to first reading on ordinance number 1-2017 and ordinance rezoning Montana Azul Estates. Pat?
Thank you, sir. At your regularly scheduled meeting on March 2nd of this year, Counsel approved the final plat for Montana Azul Estates, filing number five, and a necessary permitted use by special review to allow single-use family, single-family detached dwellings in a commercial business zone. We felt that it was necessary... We felt that it was necessary to pursue this course of action in an effort to ensure a steady inventory of property for CRHDC to offer to its customers, and this was the only way to keep them on track for spring construction. At that time, it was agreed that to ensure the character of the development they were creating, a zoning change would be requested to change the zoning of the underlying real property from commercial business to residential medium. This request is the result of that discussion. The two zoning change requests presented to Planning Commission, one by CRHDC for all of the property that they still own within the external boundaries of the subdivision in question, the other by staff for the lots that have already been sold. Both requests have been unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. All property owners have been notified as a part of the requirements of the Planning Commission hearings, advising them of their rights to speak at the hearing, and no comments were received. Section twenty-one seventy-six of the City of Alamosa Code of Ordinances requires, for the purpose of establishing and maintaining a sound, stable, and desirable environment development within the city, that rezonings be discouraged and only considered if, one, the land to be rezoned was zoned in error and is presently zoned inconsistent with the policies and goals of the city's comprehensive plan; two, that the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area; and three, proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community-related use, which was not anticipated at the time of adoption of the city's comprehensive plan, and that such rezoning will be consistent with the policies and goals of the plan. It's staff's opinion that it could be argued that this, this location meets each of the required conditions for consideration and approval of a rezoning action. This request will guarantee the future character of the development by preventing any possible commercial concerns developing within the boundaries of the residential area other than those uses that will be allowed by our home-based business ordinance.
Thank you, Pat. Councilor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. Pat, I don't know if this question pertains to the information in this piece here, but if we go ahead with this and development starts out there and, and goes through, can we require a, a community park? I know some people in that, from that area have expressed concerns about having a park out there.
What we've done, if you look at, if you look at that, the detail of that, you'll see the area around the outside of the subdivision, that there. It's been common practice for the city in the past to accept the stormwater drainage pond as the public land dedication. We've, we've done away with that practice now, and what we did since this property was not big enough to warrant a dedication that would, that would allow a park. We wanted to at least allow for the creation or the ability to create a, a trail, to incorporate into a, into a trail network in the area.
And Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're limited on what we can require for a dead, a public dedication.
Yes.
So it's not as if we can require so much as to provide a park. So we have also been hearing from council and residents the, the potential need here. As you know, from the comp plan, we actually have more parks than what the, the standard is, but when you look at our community, this is definitely an area that we developed, shown in the comp plan that if we were going to do a little community park, this is probably an area that would be needed, because there's not one nearby.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, Heather, but I just want council to remember that, because the folks in this part of town don't have a park.
Right.
And there's a, there's a lot of families in the area. Oops, sorry.
Can, can plans be made for possibly incorporating a park in this entire subdivision or, or in this area somewhere, Pat? I mean, do we have that option?
There's some room in a previous dedication and one of the previous files where we could, where we could potentially put a little pocket park. One, one problem we have that, that, that we'll be discussing at some point is the issue of piecemeal development. We, you know, we're not a, we're not a big place where, where properties build out, and because of the way the county taxes properties, people don't wanna break out a big piece of ground, because their taxes go up, and then it takes years and years for it to sell out. So what happens is, we have many little tiny subdivisions and annexations, and if we, if we have the eight percent dedicated for each one of those, we end up with, you know, enough room to park a car. So we're gonna have to, at some point, we, we need to figure out how to address that, to address the community need for a park. But like I said, there's just south of this, on the south end of the, of the filing, just below it, there is an area that's big enough for a little pocket park.
Thank you, Pat. Councilor Gregel?
Yeah, one comment. What does filing number five mean? Is it-
That's phases. That's, that's what I'm talking about, where, where people, and, and I would do it that way, too, if I was a developer, just because of the way the finances roll, but they do, they do developments in little chunks.
Okay.
So it's all one, it's all one subdivision, but it's, it's just different phases, different filings.
Thank you, Pat.
Pat, I've got a, maybe a strange question, but what, why did we zone that commercial to begin with? Do you have any idea?
It was zoned commercial when it was annexed.
It was all commercial?
When it was annexed.
Okay.
So that's, you know, many times when we annex property, we, you know, we have to say what, what zoning district it's coming in as, and people make a guess, and sometimes they guess right, and sometimes they guess wrong.
Sure. Councilor Gregel?
The, the property north of that is still commercial, right?
Yes.
There's still a bunch of commercial?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we're not looking at anyone putting in a commercial business or anything in that area?
That's one thing we wanna prevent. We wanna, we wanna maintain the character of the neighborhood that they're creating, and we wanna protect the, protect the value of the investments that the homeowners make.
Thank you, Pat. Any more questions of Pat, council? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance number one dash twenty-seventeen on first reading and set it for a public hearing on January eighteenth or soon thereafter, as per the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on ordinance number one dash twenty-seventeen. Is there any further discussion?
One comment, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Councilor-
Just so that we can have a point of clarification, just in case people are wondering why I'm voting on this issue, I, at one time, worked for CRHDC, but I no longer work for them. Normally, I would recuse myself from the voting process, but since I no longer work with them, I can vote on this issue.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman, for that clarification. Start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. We'll now move on to city clerk, municipal court, and I believe we have a resolution number one dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution designating the place for posting notices of certain public meetings for calendar year twenty-seventeen. Eric or Heather?
I'll, I'll do it.
Oh, Holly, I'm sorry.
So this is just the resolution that designates the city hall bulletin board, that's out front of city hall, as the official posting place for the year.
Councilor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve resolution number one dash twenty-seventeen, a resolution designating the place for posting notices of certain public meetings for calendar year twenty-seventeen.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second on resolution number one dash twenty-seventeen. Is there any further discussion? Team, now, start voting, please. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Move on to committee reports. Anyone have a committee report? Move on to staff announcements. Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Not very much to report on tonight. I did wanna thank our Public Works and Parks crews in regards to the snowfall that we've received and, and how they've been out there, sometimes not during the eight-to-five hours and on a holiday weekend, making sure that the, the streets are as clear as we can get them. I know also, they spent some time, the snow that we received prior to Christmas, trying to make sure the downtown had the snow removed in time to not impact the, the downtown shopping. I wanted to let council know, just given some of the stuff in the news related to ERT and the Neighborhood Watch program and, and those types of things, I'm gonna probably pull together a meeting with the two representatives we had for our community corrections discussions, which was the mayor and Councilor Grego, to meet with staff to just discuss what maybe some next steps are on, did we get everything resolved two years ago, or is there still some potential things to discuss? So we will be scheduling a meeting for that. And from a calendar perspective, just wanted to remind council, you received the invitation for the Rio Grande Economic Summit, which is Friday, January thirteenth, and I think they had RSVP information on that, if you wanna handle that. And we do have the winter retreat coming January eighteenth, and we had a little bit of a break on some of our work sessions, but we are looking at scheduling some beginning January eighteenth and looking at a few in February as well, so some of those work sessions will again start to pick up. So, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel.
I had a couple questions first.
Well, now, Councilor Gregel was jumping at the bit over here, so.
I'm sorry, no. I just had a couple of questions for city manager. On, on snow removal, what's the policy as far as residential and stuff? 'Cause people have, have kinda asked, "Well, how come they're not doing residential?"
Mr. Gregel, if I may. This was gonna be my council comment.
Oh, okay.
'Cause I also got a lot of calls and emails and that on what our policies are for snow, snow removal. Our fir, and this, and this might be good for Ruth, this is in an email from Heather to a concerned citizen about the side streets. The first priority are the, are the high-volume streets, and those are determined by traffic counts, schools, hospitals, businesses, et cetera. So that examples of those streets are Craft, First Street, State Street, Tenth, and Fourth. Then they go to the Downtown District, and with Downtown, they actually remove the snow from the area, and that includes alleys, public parking lots, and the streets. And then, if, if, if and when they have time, then they hit the side streets. So, there you go, Mr. Gregel.
Well, thank you very much. And another comment here, so the, the retreat is not the twenty-eighth? I thought it was the, you said the eighteenth.
No, the work, we're having a work section, work session on the eighteenth. The retreat is the twenty-eighth. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Why, yeah, I thought you said the retreat was on the eighteenth.
So, yeah, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to council comment. Councilor Veale?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one, one, something for Pat, and maybe the police department is on Third Street, on, on, and the crossroads, Alamosa, Bell, Ross, Edison, and San Juan. I, I believe in my humble opinion that they're becoming kinda dangerous, because cars have to kinda roll out and peek to see if there's traffic coming, because of cars being parked really close to the stop sign on either side. I'm wondering if you could maybe look into that, Pat, and see what you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Veale. Councilor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, a comment for the, the staff of the City of Alamosa and Pat and his team. I was shopping, shopping at a treasure alley the other day, and the owner, she was really applauding the efforts of the team going out there and removing the snow as quickly as they did. And the ironic thing, right after she made this big comment, this positive comment in front of a store full of people, Pat walked in. So that was very interesting, but I just wanna thank you and your staff and the crew, and thank all of the staff who put in those long hours over this past holiday weekend, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone. Let's make it a good one. And so with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.